Call to order, the 3:30 City Council briefing session. And Mr. Crago, would you like to start us off?
Do you want me to do roll first?
Actually, Ms. Fister, would you like to call roll?
Okay. Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
President.
Councilmember Kinnear.
President.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton. I see her. It looks like everyone's present, but I think they're mute might be on.
Yep. Councilmember Wilkerson, you're on mute if you want to.
Just give us a second here.
Oh, here.
Okay, all council members are present.
I was working.
All right, now, Mr. Crago.
Just for clarification, the advanced agenda would be for next one day, which I believe would be a nonexistent meeting.
Oh.
Would you like me to brief tonight's?
No, you are correct. You're right. There's no advanced agenda for consideration today, and we'll get a double dose on September 14th. We did have a few agenda issues. One was a special budget ordinance on police forfeiture funds, and I believe, Councilmember Kinnear, you had a motion on that.
Yes, thank you. Based on some information from Council President and Mr. Crago, I'd like to defer that indefinitely. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I guess indefinitely, I thought per your email, we were talking about just deferring it until after we have a conversation around civil asset forfeiture.
My email was twofold. One was that, and Ms. Allers is working on scheduling that, but the second was to get the community police reform conversation rolled out and underway. That was my conversation with Mr. Crago, which hopefully is going to be very soon. So the reason for the indefinitely is we're just a little unclear on what those two dates were. It was not meant to be indefinitely, like we're not going to ever come back to it. It's just that we didn't know those dates yet.
Well, I guess my concern is we may never come back to it, and there's a lot of stuff in here for safety, for training, just, I mean, some important pieces, and so I want to make sure that we're not just deferring this permanently and that we are in fact going to come back and address these needs of the police department.
Councilmember Kinnear.
As soon as I'm sponsoring it, I do have an interest in making sure it comes back, so rest assured, it's not going to go away forever.
Good points. Other comments, questions? All right, with that, all those in favor of deferring that special budget ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
It's one nay. Any abstentions? Okay. Then there's also a request to add to the agenda, the round two of COVID community response money, most of which is coming from the CARES Act allocation from Governor Inslee to the city of Spokane. Oh, sorry. But before that, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
No move. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Any conversation about suspending the rules? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are now suspended. Let me get the name of that. Just looking to get the name of that resolution on the CARES Act.
Do you want the resolution number?
Yes.
It'll be Resolution 2020-64, and then the accompanying special budget ordinance will be C35933.
Okay. And were we looking to do the special budget ordinance tonight too as well? Is that the request?
Yes.
Is there a motion to add the resolution and special budget ordinance for the community response funds, round two?
No move. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding them to the agenda? We're not talking about the merits yet, just adding it to the agenda.
Just a question, do we know what exactly the funds are going to be expended on, or is that going to be determined by the administration at a later date?
Mostly, we know, and I will. Yeah, yeah. So obviously, the list is in the resolution, but in terms of what that is buying the community, I will make sure that we send around the link to the actual proposals, and I'll just tell you ahead of time that all of the proposals, except for the last two, are funded as presented, subject to some minor contract language. The last two proposals, I'll start with the Wishing Star Foundation, is funding $25,000 in direct food support to clients of the Wishing Star Foundation in the city of Spokane. So that's only a portion of what they requested. And then the $300,000 for Spokane Independent Metro Business Alliance was a reduction from their original request of 430,000. That, we asked procurement to focus that money on direct support to businesses, local businesses throughout the city, similar to what we did during the Monroe Street Reconstruction Project, where we paid, I think, about $200,000 for consultants to work with all those businesses to help keep them afloat during construction and beyond, and they came out of that pretty strong. The only, that's a little blurrier of the exact amounts, because procurement's going to need to negotiate that, but the direction was to pay for things that would directly benefit the small businesses, plus some administrative overhead, as opposed to simply paying salaries at the organization. So that one's a little squishier.
Metro will act as a middleman, so to speak, to allocate those dollars?
I'm going to say yes, with, it's a middle person plus, in the sense that they're also org, it's not just direct grants. They're actually organizing advertising campaigns for these groups, so they're doing more than just allocating money to specifics. They're providing services, consulting services, marketing services, and things like that as part of individual sub-business districts, so it's a little, it's not just straight up. Whereas last round, we actually just are allocating money to some businesses, just directly giving them grants. But we'll get that sent around shortly, and you can look at that proposal, and I encourage everyone to do that, and to the degree that you want to express further direction to procurement in terms of just letting them know your thoughts about it, we will have to approve that contract at the end of the day, so it'll come back to us. So any feedback about things you like or don't like, go ahead and state that. We are just, if it seems a little rushed on this, it is, because we have some deadlines from the governor on being able to distribute these funds, although I did just see an email from Mr. Paulson that perhaps the governor is extending our deadlines a bit, which will make it easier, but at this point, until that's formalized, we have to get these dollars out the door as soon as possible, or risk having to give them back to the governor. So that's why it's a little more rushed than normal. Other questions or comments about adding this to the agenda? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adding the special budget ordinance and the resolution, generally approving the awards, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is added to the agenda. And, oh, then the other thing that we just got was the resolution in favor of the SIP loan refinance for public safety capital fleet expenses, and we have a number on that.
That will be Resolution 2020-65.
And since the rules are already suspended, is there a motion to add that to tonight's legislative agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding that to the agenda?
Council President?
Yes.
Would it be an appropriate time to make a motion to substitute the third option for the second option in this resolution?
It would not be, well, let's see. Let's finish adding it to the agenda, and then I'll take that motion, if you can get a second for it.
Okay.
I think that would be the best way to do it. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of adding this resolution to the legislative agenda tonight, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, now, Councilmember Cathcart, I'll take your motion to.
I would move to substitute the third option for the option presented in the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second.
Who's that? Councilmember Burke? Yep, okay. There's been a motion and a second to substitute option three. Any discussion on that? Oh, is that your hand, Councilmember Cathcart? Sorry. Yep.
Yeah, I'll speak. Yeah, I was just going to add, so when I mentioned this during our committee, I thought about this over the weekend, and I didn't express opposition last week, but I was just trying to think about, think this through. I had a good conversation with Tanya, our budget director, this morning, and kind of after thinking about it, I just really think that this would give us a lot more cash upfront. We could put those in our reserves, it would protect us in case there is a bigger dip than we expect. We can still invest the 720 we've talked about into some of the capital programs for the supplies, and we can still refinance next year if we want to, to shorten the length of the SIP loan. And so I just think overall, this is a little bit of a better situation than it would put us in, considering all the volatility right now, and so I just want to put that option forward.
Other council commentary. I'll just offer a slight counterpoint, and I agree with you that we can change things next year, but given the financial projections that we've received to date, it doesn't look like our general fund is in the same distress that it was. And again, because it is an internal loan, if we need to extend the loan for 15 years, we could also do that next year as well. And my sort of financial conservatism is, don't extend loan payments longer than we need to. We're on the brink of making this program financially sustainable without any further loans or payments in the near future, and I'd like to hold to that. My fear is that if we simply put $5 million in the general fund from a capital program, it will get spent on programmatic expenses, and then we'll still have to figure out how to fund that capital program. So that's just me, but we'll go for the will of the council. All those in favor of substituting option three for option two, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Any abstentions? All right, so that motion does not pass, so at this point, it is on the agenda as proposed for this evening. I believe that is the end of any agenda change proposals, unless anyone else has anything else. I'm not seeing anything. Which will bring us to the consent agenda. I, okay. I just wanted to make sure, I'm not sure if there's anyone on the line or on the meeting that can confirm that on the Airway Heights extension of the emergency water agreement, that we did not extend the number of extensions, that instead we're simply renewing this as it was previously drafted by one year. But can someone?
That's what I saw, Council President, but I can go back in there and look again.
Can we take that separately?
Take it separately? Yeah, we can. That'll give us time to figure that out. So that, you want separately now, or separately on the legislative agenda?
We can just go down there.
Okay, all right. So let's then have Ms. Fister read the consent agenda, except for number four, which we'll do separately.
Okay. Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket with Helfrich Brothers Boiler Works Incorporated, Lawrence, Massachusetts, for the purchase of boiler tubes for use at the waste energy facility from November 1, 2020 through October 31, 2021. Annual cost not to exceed $650,000, including tax. Item number two, one-year value blanket extension with Lynn Machine and Manufacturing Incorporated, Spokane Valley, Washington, to refurbish metal refuse and recycling dumpsters. Estimated annual expenditure, $550,000, including tax. Item number three, contract with Knight Construction and Supply Incorporated, Deer Park, Washington, for the purchase and installation of a roof fall protection system at the waste energy facility from August 15, 2020 through December 31, 2020, $94,672.21, including tax. Item number four will be considered separately. Item number five, purchase of property casualty and cyber insurance for the city for the period of September 1, 2020 to August 31, 2021, $2,383,856. Item number six, report of the mayor of pending a claims and payments that previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through August 21, 2020. Total $5,864,462.59 with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $3,372,162.99. B payroll claims of previously approved obligations through August 2020, excuse me, August 22, 2020, $7,127,969.14. Item number seven, city council meeting minutes for July 27, August 6, August 17, August 20, and August 27, 2020.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda is approved as read. We still have one item to take separately, which is number four.
Item number four, First Amendment extension of the amended water supply agreement with the city of Airway Heights for short-term supplemental emergency water from the city of Spokane, effective June 15, 2020 through June 15, 2020, as amended by city council on August 24, 2020, deferred from August 17, 2020 agenda.
Yes, Councilmember Mum.
It appears in our packet, the extra extension was avoided, and it was changed on the 24th of August, so what we are approving today is city clerk's number 1984-0475, which is just to extend to 2021, and maybe Brian McClatchy can confirm that, but that's what I'm seeing.
All right. Yep, yep, that's confirmed.
Correct.
Yep. Thanks, thanks, just wanted to make sure someone had asked me that question, so I appreciate people looking at the details. Okay, so essentially, it's just extending that emergency agreement one more year due to the water pollution out there from the firefighting chemicals that were out there. Councilmember Burke?
Thank you. I totally understand it's a really important issue, and we should take it seriously that our neighbors are having difficulty with their water, and I want to be a good neighbor as well, but we did receive an email from the Riverkeeper explaining where we are in terms of our river flow, and they seem a bit worried about the river flow and where we are now and where we might be later. I think we should take this into consideration as we move forward, and we should have, we should be inviting these conversations in before we make decisions like this for people who know what Silver River is and where it needs to be. And so I understand we're on a motion to approve this or not, but per the Riverkeeper's email, he had asked us if we could defer it, and I wondered if I could make that motion with this motion, but I wasn't sure process-wise.
You can make that motion.
Okay, I would like to defer this decision until, maybe we'll just say a month, so we can have a conversation with our Riverkeeper.
Is there?
A second.
Okay. There's a second from Councilmember Kinnear, and I see Councilmember Mum. You're muted, though?
No.
All right.
I like this conversation, however, this extension has already passed for the effective date, is what I'm seeing, and I don't think we have a plan in place for these people to have potable water. And so I would support all these discussions about the river flow, however, in this case, and that's part of the reason why I wanted to shorten this, is to, you know, light a fire under the federal agencies in order to come up with a long-range plan for Airway Heights, but I can't in good conscience kick it off, because we'd be operating without a contract, so I'm going to have to support, unless the administration sees it differently.
Councilmember Cathcart.
I was gonna, I'll piggyback on that and ask, is there anybody from the administration who can speak to a deferral? Because I'm inclined to support a deferral for more conversation, but I'd like to hear from someone who can speak to any urgency that might be around this issue.
The Administrator Crago, do you have any comment on this?
My understanding is the subject is your, it's Councilmember Burke, I'm trying to get ahold of Scott Simmons on the line as we speak, to kind of confirm that, from a public works perspective.
I mean, we shouldn't have been doing this this late anyway, obviously.
But the effective date is in the past.
Yeah, that's my problem.
I was just going to add that when we passed the water conservation plan a few weeks ago, we agreed, we formally agreed to convene a water conservation work group going forward to address river flows and drought conditions, and we've been accepting applications for that for a while, and I don't have the exact date, but Kara Odegaard sent me an email not too long ago that the convening date for that is coming up, so that conversation is kicking off in the next, I want to say, two weeks. Oh, sorry, September 7th, so as soon as next week is kicking off. So it's exactly the conversation, I believe, that the Riverkeeper is asking for, and the goal is to come up with something by 2021 that is far more protective of river flows than the current system. So that process is formally going forward with the blessing of the city and sponsorship. I don't see Kara on the line for this particular meeting, but if you have concerns, I would check in with her, and you can find out who's on the work group, and, sorry, it's September 8th.
Also, a point of information, if I may, Council President, is Airway Heights sent a letter to us asking for this extension back in May, prior to the expiration. It expired June 15th.
Other conversation, commentary on the motion to defer for a month?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson.
So I certainly hear Councilwoman Burke, if we deferred it, just for conversation purposes, my thoughts is we would still have to come back and approve it for the water issue alone, so with that conversation being just a week or so down the road, I really feel that we should go ahead and act on it, just for contractual purposes and for the comfort of Airway Heights one, what we're doing.
Other commentary, questions? All right, so the motion on the floor is to defer item four from the consent agenda on extending the water agreement with Airway Heights for a month. All those in favor of the deferral indicate by saying aye, and perhaps raise your hand.
Aye.
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 I believe that's three ayes. All those opposed?
Nay.
Oh, wait, just a second. Michael, were you an aye or an nay?
Michael, were you? Aye.
Okay, so there are four ayes. All those opposed, nay.
Can I have a recount of that, please?
Yeah, well, let me, no abstentions. So if I understand, the ayes are Councilmembers Burke, Cathcart, Kinnear, and Stratton, those are all ayes, right? And nays are Councilmembers Wilkerson, Mum, and Beggs. So it's deferred.
So we have no contract to provide them water? Do we need to shut the water off?
I don't know. I don't. So a month would be September 28th, but I don't know, I don't know if there's any, anybody on the legal team on, I mean, that is the vote at the moment, but in terms of.
Well, I also want to say that if we renew this in June, then we've been operating without a contract thus far, so, I mean, I don't know what it changes from now until then. It just gives us enough conversation to go through and talk about how much water and...
I hear you, Councilmember Burke, but I was not under, the understanding that this was expired, I just, you know, got clarity on the day. I'm very concerned that we need to have a legal intervention on this right away, because by us rejecting this extension, we are out of contract, so I, we need to get on this then.
Yep. And to be clear, we haven't rejected the extension, but we have not approved it yet.
President?
Yes.
Yeah, if there's a proper procedural way to do it, I would support a shorter deferral, but I do think a deferral for discussion does make sense.
All right, well, you, you are in the majority, so, well... All right, well, you, you are in the majority, so, well, I don't know, you could, you could make a motion for a different date, I guess, would be the appropriate course of action.
I would, I would make a, I would move then to change the deferral date on this to September 14th, a week after that conversation convened with the Riverkeeper.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it's been a motion, a second to change the deferral date to the 14th. Any discussion about that? Councilmember Stratton.
I was going to ask Councilmember Burke how you feel about that. Can you live with the 14th?
Thank you for asking. I feel like as long as the Riverkeeper is involved in this conversation, I feel comfortable waiting till we hear from him specifically.
Councilmember Kinnear, did you have a comment? Councilmember Kinnear, I saw your hand raised, I don't know if you have it.
Yes, I essentially was going to ask the same thing. September 14th is going to be a really busy night, so just be aware.
Councilmember Stratton.
Okay, I do have to ask one more question. So this expired June 15th, correct? 2020.
Correct.
And city council, we did not get it, when was the first time we touched this? Was it August?
We deferred it on August 17th. I'm not sure when it first came into our on-base system.
I'm just wondering what, where does that, where does the problem exist? This was emergency, which it's an emergency water, and it expired June 15th, that we're dealing with this in August. And now we're being, theater being held to the fire because we want more information, but it's no, you have to pass it now, which I think we all feel terrible because it's an emergency water with a good neighbor, but I think we need to consider the source sometimes, and where, how this was so delayed, I don't understand.
Well, is there anyone on the meeting who would like to address Councilmember Stratton's question?
Is Mr. Simmons available at all to address the council on this issue?
I'm able to get the call right now, I've texted him back and forth right now, Councilmember.
Okay.
Don't recall, I will find out. To know that we will continue to provide water to Airway Heights and not cut them off as we have, during the contract while working on this, if council were to reject the contract, that of course is a different issue. But in the meantime, while negotiating, talking, having these conversations, we'll continue to supply Airway Heights.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, then I think I will be voting no on this amendment for the week, because the 14th is going to be obviously a big meeting for us, but also a month gives us a lot of time to be able to have a really in-depth dialogue. If we're already going to need to provide water for them, this is a year-long contract, so I think we should put a lot of effort and energy into getting it right before we pass it. So that's just my input.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Councilmember Burke's points are certainly well-taken, and, but I would suggest that we could always defer this again if we need to, but this at least gives us an opportunity to address it sooner if we have a resolution that we agree upon.
Mr. Craig O., did you, were you raising your hand?
Yes. Pies, last Pies meeting was actually the first time council had with this contract, City of Airway Heights, that's when it was delivered the request to the city. We got it in front of Pies as quickly as possible, and that was in July. So I'm not sure why Airway Heights waited to bring that forward, but they did, and we've been running it as fast as possible since then.
We got it in May. We got the letter from them in May, not June or July. In the briefing, it's got the attached letter. But we can dig in that later.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion in front of us is to change the deferral date from the 28th of September to September 14th. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of making that change indicate by saying aye, and maybe raise your hand a little while you do it.
Aye.
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 I'll put an aye in. Not that I'm in favor of the deferral, but it's a shorter deferral. So how about those opposed? Three opposed. Extensions there. Okay, so it is now on the 14th of September. Okay, and I just, as a matter of information, I forward all of you by email the first invitation to the people who are on that water conservation group meeting, and I noted that the Riverkeeper is part of that group. So he will have a chance to talk about that. But to be clear, that process is not going to be done in a week. That's just the first meeting. It's anticipated to go for many months. So, but again, maybe there'll be something that comes out of that meeting, that first meeting, that provides further information for people in order to vote on the extension. And again, I'll just note that this extension, there's two different water agreements, I believe with Airway Heights. There's a regular one that's been in place for years and years, this doesn't impact that, but this one is for the emergency use, so it's a little bit different. But those intertie agreements, of course, are very important, and so is the river flow. Anything else for the briefing session?
I think we have to vote on the deferral of the 14th. We just made an amendment to amendment.
No, we voted, it was a separate motion. We had already approved the deferral to the 28th, and then there was a new motion to change it to the 14th, so.
Thank you for the clarification. I was concerned.
No, that's, that's, thanks for checking.
Council President?
Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would, would it be appropriate to also make a motion to defer one of our items from this evening's agenda?
You can.
The SBO on traffic calming?
You can.
So I would, I would make the motion that we defer that ordinance, C35931, until, I guess until December to include it as part of our regular budget cycle.
Okay, let's see if we'll get a, a date for that, just hang on. We need to get an actual meeting date, though.
I don't know if we have an exact date yet that we're going to be taking up the budget, perhaps December 7th-ish.
All right, well, for purposes of the motion, we'll say it's December 7th. So the motion's to defer to December 7th, that SBO ordinance. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll speak against the motion.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Mum.
This, this is money from the 2019 budget, correct?
Correct.
That was a transfer that was not authorized. And it was authorized, but they didn't meet the, I shouldn't use that strict of language. They did not meet the minimum needed in order to access the funds, and we have several projects in our neighborhoods, including in your district, Mr. Cathcart, that are dependent on these funds, and we're going out for grants next, in the next several weeks. So it's very timely. We need to get some certainty around this funding, otherwise we will be cutting projects out of each neighborhood.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just speak to my, my request for deferral in that I think that there is just so much uncertainty right now around revenues going forward, and to take money out of reserves at this point, I'm not sure is the best decision. I think if we can specifically fund from our unappropriate reserves any projects that we've decided upon, that that might be, in a very deliberative way, that might be a better way than just a blanket $500,000 out of those reserves. I would just, I would rather keep those dollars in there and be ready for anything that may come down, and, and fund project by project as we go, if that's what we decide to do.
So I think there might be a little confusion about the funds and the sources of those and the term of reserves. This money was originally in the traffic calming. It's, it's not something that goes into any of our general reserves, and so this goes directly to projects, that's all this money can be used for. Does that help?
Well, I understand that. I discussed this with, with Tanya this morning in trying to get an understanding of kind of how the funds work, and, and her sense was that there wasn't any urgency around it, and that we could do this as part of our regular budget cycle. And so my, my thinking is, let's just keep the money in the reserves as long as we can so that we know that we have every dollar that we, that we need after later on.
Yeah, and you may not have the benefit of being on the traffic calming, financial side of it. That's not exactly how this works. And so we, Councilwoman Wilkerson, and Councilwoman Burke, and I had been asked to actually cut projects because of the timeliness of it. We, we are under a timeline to do this, and we, we should have, that money should have never really transferred out of the project, so waiting three months has pretty, pretty large impact, and Ms. Wallace may not have been informed about that.
And that's well taken. I still believe, though, that we should be keeping every dollar we can in reserves until we, we know what the future is going to, going to hold, so.
So they're not in reserves, that's my point. They belong, they will, they belong back, they cannot go back to anything other than traffic calming. They won't go into reserves.
I have a question either for Councilmember Mum or perhaps anyone on the call. The, I'm looking at it now, and it says it's coming out of reserves and going into traffic calming, but actually, the money, if I understood, was taken, was put in the police department without the correct procedure. So I thought this was coming back out of the police department of the extra allocation that really wasn't part of the plan. So it wouldn't be a reserve issue, it would be the police department, but maybe we need to look at that language a little more closely before 6 o'clock tonight to make sure that that intent is carried through. I don't think, Tim Donovan's on the line, I think he drafted this, so I want to get some clarity about that, because it, I thought it was coming out of the extra money put into police operations via this transfer that didn't meet the intent of the traffic calming fund.
That, that's how that was intended. So if there's a language problem there, thank you, Mr. Cathcart, for calling attention to that. We'll get that cleared up.
That would be great.
But it's not something that's supposed to impact reserves, never was.
Is there other commentary on the motion to defer to December 7th? Okay, not seeing any. So there's a motion, a second to defer this until December 7th. All those in favor of the deferral indicate by saying aye, and go ahead and wave your hand.
Aye.
Okay, I see one. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, so that looks like six nay, so it is not deferred, it'll be on tonight's agenda, but we will look at that language a little more carefully and make sure that it's, it's really reversing the earlier transfer instead of a, a more convoluted one. See that. Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I would just say, and anytime, Councilmember Cathcart, just give me a holler as a sponsor, I can, I'm happy to share the information so we don't have to figure this out on the dice. If it was written incorrectly coming out of reserves, we should have probably addressed it sooner than now. So thank you for calling our attention to that.
Right, okay. Any other business? All right, well, it's always fun doing business with you all. We'll see you at 6 o'clock. Have a great rest of the afternoon. We're adjourned until 6:00.